About hard enough, Wes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for being here. It is time to call tonight, January the fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-five, Union County Council Meeting in order. At this time, I've asked everybody to stand for an invocation from our chaplain, Chaplain Bright, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Vice Chair David Sinclair.
Yes, Father, thank you so much for this day, and we just thank you for your perfect gift, Jesus Christ, Lord, and the gift through him, death, burial, resurrection, Lord, that we might know that we can have eternal life with a relationship with him. And Lord, I just pray for this council meeting, Lord, that everything we do and say here be pleasing to you. Lord, I pray that you lead and guide us to lead this great county in a positive direction. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I will turn the meeting over to our clerk for roll call.
District one, Danny Bright.
Present.
District two, John Glenn.
Present.
District three, David Sinclair.
Present.
District four, Annie Smith.
Present.
District five, Carolyn Rutherford.
Present.
District six, John Flood.
The appointments of Vice Chair, Chaplain. So at the present time, our current Vice Chair is David Sinclair. Our current Chaplain is Danny Bright. And all of y'all sent a list of our standing committees, but I will be glad to help. I've got a copy of them up here as we go through that process. At this time, I will open up the table for motions for who shall serve as Vice Chair.
I'd like to say David's our senior council member. He communicates well with every council member. I'd like to nominate him as Vice Chair.
I have a motion for David Sinclair.
Second.
I have a second for Ms. Carolyn. I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nomination?
Close.
I have a motion to close by John Flood. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Welcome, Dave. Thank you.
Looking forward to another two years.
Thank y'all.
At this time, I will open up the motions for our Chaplain. Have any nominations?
I'd like to make a motion that Danny continue to do it. I think he's done a great job, and he represents our county well, so I'd like to keep him in that position.
I agree.
I have a second.
I have a second. Will you serve?
Yeah.
Do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do I have a motion that nominations come to a close?
Make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have, okay, Councilman Flood, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like manner, and it is unanimous. Moving to our standing committees. I don't know how y'all want to do this. I can go one at a time, or y'all may have already read these and like where you're at. How would y'all suggest? I want to do it as easy as possible for y'all.
Is it the same? Did you leave them same as they were?
Well, this was.
I might have overlooked what you said.
I'm not even. Where is it?
Oh, well, maybe I didn't. Let's start with, I thought we did. I could have missed that in the package. Administration, we'll start there.
They're on the website. It's very easy to get to.
Yep, it is. Go to standing committees on your gear up.
Officials, the unin committees.
Go to council, go to council. And then scroll to the bottom of the page, and it says.
Everybody's on Finance Committee, so, I mean, Dr. Flood's the Chair of it.
They're from the homepage. It's go to officials and the committees.
Dr. Flood still want to be the Chair?
I'm fine with that.
Of Administration and Finance?
That's fine.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Dr. Flood then as the Chairman of the Finance Committee.
All right, and then we would keep all of us on that. So we have a motion. Everybody's on, keep John as the Chair. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
From Councilperson Smith, do I have any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And John is the Chair of Administration and Finance. Going down to Public Roads and Bridges, David Sinclair is the Chair, Ms. Rutherford, Councilman Bright, and Councilman Glenn. Are there any proposed changes to that?
None.
Motion to accept.
As, as.
Written.
Okay, motion to accept. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Any opposed? All of them in favor say aye. Any opposed? Personnel, county office, and departments. Current Chair is Councilperson Smith with Danny Bright, David Sinclair, and John Flood. Moving to Public Health and Social Services, Ms. Carolyn Rutherford is the Chair with John Glenn, Annie Smith, and David Sinclair.
I'll make a motion to maintain the chairmanship in the current members.
I have a motion to maintain chairmanship in members. I have a second. Ms. Smith seconds. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. Law Enforcement, Judiciary, and Recreation, Chair Danny Bright with Ms. Carolyn Rutherford, David Sinclair, and John Glenn.
Make a motion we leave it as is.
From David Sinclair, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from John Flood. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it is unanimous. Planning and Development, David Sinclair Chair with Annie Smith, John Flood, and Danny Bright.
I'll make a motion to do, keep as is.
Any, Councilperson Smith makes a motion to keep as is. Do I have a second?
I'll suck.
I have a second from Councilman Sinclair. We have used committees to help guide council. We've used it three or four times just this past year, and it has been very useful. It's a great way to communicate, to be able to come back to the entire council. And yes, David, you've been a godsend when it came to roads and bridges, so, but it's a big help to me and to Union County. So I appreciate y'all's support in that, and so we'll just move on. We got that done. Any opposed, any opposed, like sign? Unanimous. The next is that I'm asking for, to, for council to cover an expenditure out of Council Contingency Fund. It was two expenditures. It was one hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-nine cent for Ms. Melanie Lawson, the Clerk of Court, who just, the term expired, for a plaque for her. It was a nice crystal plaque that was etched with her name in it, thanking her for her eight years as Clerk. Also, for, it's sixty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents, and actually, a little bit, not that much, it was about sixty-two dollars, but to cover for the refreshments at the swearing in ceremonies.
I'll make a motion we approve this expenditures.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair.
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Flood. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? State that I did talk to Ms. Lawson and ask Ms. Lawson if she would like for that to be given to her here at council or with her ladies at the office before she left, and she wanted to do it with her ladies, and I really appreciate that. I think it was good. It was good for her, and it was, she enjoyed the token and wanted all of y'all to be, she was thankful for what y'all done. The next item I have is considering to move two council meetings. A request to move the February eleventh meeting from this location to one oh three West Main Street. We do have the Michael Works building back, or what was called the Michael Works. It is Union County's one oh three building. The purpose behind this is, is that on February the eleventh, we should have a public hearing, and we should have a company here that is Project Panama, who wants to introduce themselves, and we just felt like it would be a nicer place for the public to gather and to meet these people that are coming in. So I bring that to council. Would you like to do that?
I'd like to talk about that for a minute.
Okay.
Since we now have the Michael Works building back, that's where we used to have council during my first four years.
We moved it there during COVID.
Yeah. So I'd propose just moving it back there, period. It's more room for folks to participate.
I do agree, and actually, and I'll cover some seating here in a little bit that we may be, we're working on right now to accommodate for that as a potential, but, but at least for February, would y'all consider moving it back to one oh three?
Make a motion that we move it back to one oh three, second.
I have a motion from Councilman Glenn. I have a second from, from Ms. Carolyn. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it is unanimous. The next is a request to move our regular scheduled meeting for June tenth of two thousand and twenty-five to June seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-five. That is moving it back to the third Tuesday. It is traditionally, that has been when we finish up our budget on that Thursday, Tuesday, and I am trying to stay to that. It'll fit our, our budget sessions better. Any, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair. I have a second from Councilman Flood. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. The next is, we are having first reading on providing the old Union County Annex Building and giving it to the University of South Carolina Union, actually, the Union Lawrence High Commission on Higher Education. This is something council has already voted on, both in committee and the floor, and this will be first reading. You have, all of that information was presented in the council package. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood.
I'll suck it.
I have a second from David Sinclair.
But I, we need to have a discussion.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a second, so it reads right into discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think it's, I mean, I'm good with it. I mean, I appreciate everything that USC Union's done. I mean, I think anybody can look around and see the difference that they're making in our community, but I also wanted just to make sure that the general public knows, and make sure I'm clear on this too, that we have a callback that states that it ever ceases to be used for the college, that it'll revert back to the county.
That is correct. That is in the documentation. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign?
No.
Oh, and I, I will, yes, I will. We do have in writing from Councilperson Smith abstaining from this vote based on her The next is a second reading, authorizing the execution delivery of a fee agreement between Union County and Project Panama. We had first reading title only last week, or last month. This is a full enacted word document that y'all will receive. Basically, it is a standard FLO agreement, and this is second reading.
Make a motion with it.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair.
Second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. The next is the second reading of a multi-county park agreement with Union County Spartanburg and Project Panama. Again, this is second reading. You had first reading last month. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. The next is, we are having first reading on providing the old Union County Annex Building and giving it to the University of South Carolina Union, actually, the Union Lawrence High Commission on Higher Education. This is something council has already voted on, both in committee and the floor, and this will be first reading. You have, all of that information was presented in the council package. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood.
I'll suck it.
I have a second from David Sinclair.
But I, we need to have a discussion.
Okay. Well, we've got a motion and a second, so it reads right into discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think it's, I mean, I'm good with it. I mean, I appreciate everything that USC Union's done. I mean, I think anybody can look around and see the difference that they're making in our community, but I also wanted just to make sure that the general public knows, and make sure I'm clear on this too, that we have a callback that states that if it ever ceases to be used for the college, that it'll revert back to the county.
That is correct. That is in the documentation. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign?
No.
Oh, and I, I will, yes, I will. We do have in writing from Councilperson Smith abstaining from this vote based on her The next is a second reading, authorizing the execution delivery of a fee agreement between Union County and Project Panama. We had first reading title only last week, or last month. This is a full enacted word document that y'all will receive. Basically, it is a standard FLO agreement, and this is second reading.
Make a motion with it.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair.
Second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. The next is the second reading of a multi-county park agreement with Union County Spartanburg and Project Panama. Again, this is second reading. You had first reading last month. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Flood.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? And it is unanimous. Last, we have the third and final reading of authorizing a termination agreement between Union County and a multi-jointly owing business park between us and Spartanburg for what used to be the old Hillcrest Mall location in the city of Spartanburg. This is terminating it. We've already had public meeting and two readings to that. Do I have a motion to accept this termination?
Make a motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Sinclair.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilperson Smith. Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign? All right, well, the next, we have any call for committees? And I don't know that we had a committee meeting last month, so we didn't have any report. Going to the supervisors' report, I'm not going to go through the entire volume of the report as I did last month. I try to do that at least once a quarter, but please take some time to read through this. There's a lot of man hours putting it together and reporting this, and there's a lot of good things going on through your divisions of Union County. I would like to point out, if we will turn to page thirteen, first off, on page twelve, you'll actually notice we did fifty-nine building permits in the month of January. That is a very good report, very good productivity, and that does not include anything that's being permitted or built in the city, such as Buffalo Creek. But I want to go over our projects, because we have a number of projects that, and they keep adding, and we keep working toward them. Y'all are, y'all are making me very busy. I say that laughingly. First off, the jail addition project, they have been, a few HBAC supplies running behind. We are really close to getting this fixed up. I'm expecting the end of January to mid-February, and as it stands right now, we will be a good bit under budget. So we have met with them, talked to them, and this, this is, project has really gone along smooth. The Spartanburg County Line project, everybody has copies of all the survey work, that's both Spartanburg, that's the Governor's Office, all of the Governor's Office attorneys that were working on this. We're expecting to have something from the Governor's Office on how to proceed, but we are ready to go with this. In working with Spartanburg, nobody has changed their line. We haven't changed ours. Spartanburg hasn't changed theirs, because they knew that we were both working on this. So as it stands right now, you know, everybody's still in the respective counties they started from, even if the line's not there, and we're working very promptly and expediently as the state will allow to get this resolved and taken care of. Buffalo Mill property update, the COG has still provided a timeline for the voluntary cleanup process. We should have all of that paperwork in by March of two thousand and twenty-five. There has been one change made to the Buffalo Mill project. We have sent out and created a, or had a survey done to remove the Buffalo, Old Buffalo office out of any potential or proposed land transfer. This property that we would like to keep and maintain and do something with, and not have it as a part of any of the cleanup of Buffalo Mill, should that happen.
Let me interrupt you real quick. The office, as you're going in fire lane, was slightly off to the left.
That is correct. It's the red building, and it needs, it needs some repairs, and we're going to have to look at that. I've actually had Michael and his crew already start that process, but it just didn't, it didn't make sense to have that as a part of the project. And, you know, we understand it's got to be cleaned up, but we still want to maintain as much of that heritage as we can.
Also, I think we need to, and it's just come to mind, this doesn't really have anything to do with what we're doing, but I want to tell you why, what was on my mind, but that second tower is accessible now.
Is it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me know. We'll get our crew out there, we, that, get that door welded back shut. Buffalo Mill Pond, I am, I'm being advised that the second letter from the Army Corps of Engineers is pending our arrival, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. Again, the COG and the Appalachian Regional Council of Governments all understand, working through the Army Corps of Engineers, this does take a while, so they're, they're okay with us extending the project a little bit if we need to, but again, we are waiting on Army Corps of Engineer approval, because the silt pond has to be built.
Oh, can we just talk about that for just a second?
Sure.
So the Buffalo Mill Pond project, we, is that the only thing we're waiting on before it can be bided?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, we've got all the engineering plans, all of that's done. We're just waiting on those permits to come.
Thank you.
Actually, I tried to get them to go ahead and bid the majority of it, but they can't do that since it's a grant. It has to be bid as one project. Gateway signs, we have three or four gateway signs have been installed. One on one seventy-six is complete, one in Whitmire and Cross Keys, the signs are up, but they only have the form post up. What's got to happen, bricks going to be put around the form post. In Lockhart, they just have the four, the two posts up, the form post. The sign's not there yet. I know, I appreciate y'all telling me that the light, the sign is not lit up at night, and I follow back up, because they were designed with solar lighting in it, so that we did not have to electrify those. Goldville Fire Station.
Let me back you up to gateway signs. I want council to consider in the next budget year, doing the other highways that come through our county, like seventy-two. I think it was, I guess, our oversight that we didn't catch all of them the first time through, but it's a project we can take on out of the next budget, assuming we have money.
Well, the, the, I just replaced the existing signs that we had. There were only four, and they were a complete state of repair, disrepair, and I apologize, it has taken us, we have gone to bid on this project. I've got Ms. Jamie here twice. It's, it's been, you know, again, you're working with, with county government, it takes a little while, but we finally got a responsive, responsive bidders that had bid on what we were wanting. I think they look good, but again, the four signs that we were replacing, and that was our intent, those signs were literally, I don't even know how that, the posts were standing in most of them, and that was it. We need to do a better job. So, you know, I want somebody when they come in on, on our highway and look, we look presentable. Y'all want to add additional signage, that's no problem. We, we've already got the bid process taken care of.
Do, do we have an idea of how many, how many more signage we need? How many more signs we need?
Well, we didn't do, there's nothing on Highway two fifteen, so you start looking at two fifteen, and seventy-two, there's two, and I don't know, y'all, y'all may identify some others. Again, there are a lot of roads that transport in from other counties into Union, but again, I just went with the four locations of signs that we had.
I was just talking about highways, not streets across the county.
But this highway, I know we missing too much.
Okay, well, and if that's the case, two more. And I'll give you a rough average, we're looking at about eight thousand dollars a Goldville Fire Station, this project seventy-five percent complete. First layer of asphalt was installed, actually, it was installed in December, but interior finishes are being done now. Friedman has installed the LP tank, and I know that permanent power will actually be put on this week, and heaters will be hung, and that allowed them to finish what they've got to finish on the inside, because it's very difficult hanging sheet rock in twenty-degree temperature. Disc golf course, we had a disc golf course at South Hills that literally was at completion, and Hurricane Helene came through, and it just destroyed it. So our staff has evaluated, they've got up with contractors, we've determined what repairs need to be made, and this is on our FEMA reimbursement list, so we will be reimbursed for anywhere from seventy-five to one hundred percent of expenditures. Now, we're hoping for the hundred. Again, sometimes you don't know until they actually give you the money, but still, seventy-five percent's better than us having to redo the entire thing at our cost. One oh three Main Street, Michael Works is out, and what we can do is, if, if there is a desire to go back and constantly use one oh three, then what we'll do is, is add that as an agenda item in February. I will add, and it's not on this list, but I will add, February, I was going to try to keep it as brief as possible, so that, you know, once our company does come in and announce, and then we have third reading, I'd love for the public to be able to spend some time with them. Now, if we've got business, we've got to do business. This is our business meeting, but if we can be brief, you know, we, I would like to see us be able to spend that time.
So I know Ms. Curtis has been in Junction. Where is Kathy Gobbo?
Same place. And we need to get them out of there. And no offense, it's a wonderful building, but it's not conducive to the work they do. Proposed Regional Economic Development Partnership, this is something that you'll hear more information on, but Dalton, myself, Cole Alberston, the administrator for Spartanburg County, and their Spartanburg One Economic Development Team, and Patrick Kay, who is the city manager for Paclet, we have all met a couple of times, and what we're working as is a potential regional project between the three of us, each providing three pieces of property that we could market and show as one team. What benefit is that of Union? Well, we get to use the marketing ability and resources that Spartanburg One has. These properties are not, we're marketing them now. These properties are not, we're marketing them now and this might be some additional abilities we have. But before we can go into any type of agreement, we have to have, of course, something put in writing and then we will have to turn around and bring it to our respective councils. I just want y'all to be aware that this is something that we are working because again, it's us trying to look at every option to make Union better. Wallace Thompson Hospital property. While it's new to our list, this has not been new as a project. For over the past eighteen months, we have been working with the bankruptcy referee on Wallace Thompson Hospital property. It's better known as the Union Hospital District. All properties have been under a bankruptcy referee for the past nine years. I'm okay. You need some water, we'll go get you some.
Can I slow down a minute?
Mr. Jerry, there's no sound.
Yeah, the AT&T dropped out and set things up. I'm recording, I'll post it up.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Back up.
So literally for, this property has been in bankruptcy for over nine years. What we've done is has reached out eighteen months ago and said, where's it in? You know, when does it end? Well, it's really become an issue after last February when Union County Medical Center decided, or two February's ago, when Union Spartanburg Regional announced that it was going to build a new Union Medical Center. Now, here we are at the point that they're getting ready to move in. And we have been working really diligently since October, November, asking the bankruptcy team and the referees for assistance. We can't allow this, these buildings, and there's a total of four properties. Three of those properties, we can't allow them to just be sitting empty and not secured or not hardened. Or there won't be anything left within weeks or months. Just because the property does sit, some of it off the road, some of it's very big, people have access to. So we're working really, really hard trying to get the bankruptcy committee and the referee to go ahead and provide us. We've asked for initial hundred and fifty thousand dollars from them to go ahead and start hardening the structures, add temporary fencing, add lighting, whatever we may need to do to provide some security. Their understanding of that, they know this, and we continue pushing to this. Union County does not own the property. The property is in the name of the Union County Hospital District. So we don't own it and we are being advised by court order that we will get this property when they close the bankruptcy proceedings. However, this has not happened yet. And I can't tell you whether it will or not. I can only tell you what we've been told. I don't have anything in writing. So what we're doing is pushing the bankruptcy committee very hardly to say, look, if you want these buildings to be salvageable, you need to help us. We've got to maintain fire systems up to do that. We've got to maintain heating system to do that. I'm actually, I've talked to one person personally, one-on-one, another one, I'm going to grab him in a minute. But they've worked there every day and we're going to have to keep the boilers up, keep the heat on so the water doesn't freeze. So the sprinkler system stays up. And those are just some of the things that you look at. We've got hardened windows and doors on first floor, security fencing, et cetera. So just be advised, we're working toward that. Joint Maintenance City and County Shop. The plans are provided, the topographical survey is completed. We're just waiting on the construction to go out and bid. I think the engineers have the site plans, just finishing up on what the grading schedule will be. New Animal Shelter. Council, all y'all were sent a email with the new, or proposed, what a proposed animal shelter could be. Staff worked on this for literally about six, seven months. Meeting with architects probably five or six times. They've had meetings both at the old shelter or at the existing shelter. Plus in a conference room setting, trying to build what's best. I think they've come up with a really good design that I think it will be better for us. We currently, now, we're well over occupied, but our animal shelter now has ninety-two dogs in it. It probably has a max capacity of about fifty. So we're over occupied and have been. The new shelter would have a potential occupancy of a hundred and sixty with ability to add on if needed. You have to understand the history of the old shelter. It was built in the early nineties as a temporary facility that became permanent. So, you know, in order to fix this, we would like to do it where we don't have to worry about fixing this again or temporary patching something. I think as a county, we could fix this and make this right. Tipton Sports Complex, we're still working. We have the same engineer and architects working on the three projects. It's an economy to scale. And they are working for a date to select, if the end of this month, first to next. Probably it looks like it's going to be towards the middle of February right now. We want to have a master plan meeting of a sports complex. So we want to advertise a meeting, give anybody who has anything, whether it's sports in mind or they just want to come in here, what's going on, we want that input. If we're going to build a facility, we, I want to make sure that it impacts the right people and we provide the right sports. I don't want it to be the sports I want. And y'all can tell I don't play a lot of sports, so. But again, a nice master plan meeting and then they can begin to take and design based on the conversations that are held and provide that in phases so that we will be able to functionally plan it out and build it as funding is allowable, using hospitality funds, not operational funds to fund it. Historic Jail Building, we still have Carlisle Associates going through our old Mills Jail. And we are still working with Meansville Riley Road and San Tuck Heavren with water grants that they've received that we are passing through, through rural infrastructure. And the City of Union should be going to construction here very, very soon on the sewer lineup for one seventy-six. Lot going on. Budget-wise, we are at our halfway mark and we are forty-six point five-three percent or literally three and a half percent under budget. So we're on target based on where we should be in a budget this time of the year. I will also caveat, a lot of stuff that we pay at the beginning of the year, like insurance, these type things are one-time upfront and it kind of weighs the budget a little bit the first of the year. But as you go on, you don't have that expenditure but one time. So you'll see those percentages begin to creep up a little bit. FEMA-wise, we're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement fees to date. Only because, it could be more, but because we allow a state contractor to come in and do all the debris management at no expense to us. We're not having to eat that expense and add it to a FEMA contractor. So we're doing well there. So that kind of catches you up with what we've been doing. Do I have anything, anything from council?
Is this the time I can talk about what I need to talk about?
Whatever you want to talk about.
Okay. Couple of things. I've had some folks call me up and ask me about how things were handled in a particular way. And then the rumor got out that Phillip was heavy-handed and fired Lee Brandon. Lee is a close personal friend, so I called him up and asked him. He says he has a great working relationship with the supervisor and that never occurred. The second issue was a county official who entered a county official's office area before that other official had left. And it is the supervisor's position to make sure that doesn't happen twice. I wasn't there, so I don't know how it was handled, but that is just the facts. Now, last thing I want to talk about is we need to be transparent. We don't need to be calling other council members and pulling the idea of changing our form of government. I'm actually not opposed to changing the form of government, but when you look at the form of government, there are several things you've got to look at. Simply a interval election for that is over forty thousand bucks in cost. The referendum has been turned down at least three times while I've moved here. Last time was better than two to one against. There may be some benefits. Right now, we have a council supervisor form of government where council functionally makes financial decision, the supervisor is the manager of the county. He does all the hiring and firing and that sort of thing. The other two forms of government are council administrator and council county manager. Council administrator, basically the administrator does nothing. Council has to do all hiring, firing, functionally managing. The council manager is almost functionally the same as county supervisor except for at will, council could fire the county manager. Now, here's the story. I know what Phillip makes. He makes somewhere between eighty-five and ninety thousand dollars a year. The least you're going to get a county manager slash administrator for is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus benefits. That's the minimum. And their contract's also going to say, if you fire me, you have to pay me and give me benefits for six months. When we go about this decision tree, we need to understand, A, where our history is so we don't waste money and two, if and when we make the change, what's it going to cost us? Now, one of the things that's come up, let's assume we had a referendum next November and it passed. What does that mean for Phillip? Well, it means for Phillip, you've got to pay him and he doesn't lose any of his authority until his term terminates. And so we couldn't hire an administrator, manager, whatever you would call him, until after Phillip's current term expires, which is, I can't remember.
Two years.
Two years from now. So, I mean, let's talk this in public, let's get public input.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Said that council administrator form of government, the council hires all employees. Council only hires administrator in that form of government. The only person that works for council is the administrator. That's one hundred fact for sure. And the role of the administrator doesn't change from what supervisor is. The only difference is, is that administrator's not elected, he's hired by county council. And then that's the only employee the county council has is the town administrator.
You're using administrator where I use county manager.
Yeah, I know the difference.
There are two different distinctions. There's two different distinctions there.
Yeah, I'm correct in that. And who was the council member that's pulling, you keep referring to council member?
There were three people that you did not call. Phillip, Annie, and myself.
Okay. The reason I don't call you, because the last three times I called you or text you to call me back, you hadn't returned my call. The last time I called Annie or text Annie, she wouldn't know why I was texting her number without being in the group. A group tax amongst council is a quorum.
It is.
Okay, so that's why. It is the job of council, it is the job of council, is talk to other council members and get the ideas from other council members, is get their people. That is the job. But when you don't answer your phone and you have the only text message, if you don't, I'm not going to continue to call.
You can leave a message.
We're talking about changing the form of government anyway, who wants to change?
Neither.
What is the reason?
In November, in November twenty-five, it goes on about, in November twenty-five, you got one more, you got one year left on supervisor's term. I want a change.
Okay, so therefore you just, you like it, some people don't like it. I don't really care which way it is, but why is this a big issue?
We're the last county in the state of South Carolina that has supervisor form of government. Other counties have chosen to look forward.
Okay.
Other counties have chosen to go in a different direction.
A whole lot larger than we are too, so maybe that may work for them, but it may not work for us.
A lot of them are a lot smaller than we are.
Either way, I just don't think this issue that y'all need to be going back for, not here.
I think my issue is the transparency of it. And I'll be honest with you, the public needs input here.
We'll have a public hearing, but.
Let's do this, guys.
We need to say one thing before you do that. I think what's going on now, he'll say gossip and childish. We should have done this among ourselves instead of in the public because it don't look good on us. This is our first meeting of the year. We should start off in January as professional, as a council working together for our people as to what we was elected for. That's my take.
I want to concur with you, Ms. Carolyn. We have a company that wants to come here and provide three hundred and forty million dollars in investment. And I'd like to be seen as united front right now for that. What I'm going to recommend is our suggest, not recommend, I'm going to suggest that we have, look, y'all only have a finance and administrative committee meeting. That will fall right into play because that is administration if you want to perform that. I'm not going to, I don't get a vote no matter. So if y'all want to provide and move forward with a change of Phillip, you know, go right ahead. I don't get a vote unless there's a tie. So whatever y'all feel like, that's what y'all want to do, but I think we need to have these conversations in committee.
I had a recommendation. The recommendation that I have would be before we even, I mean, I'm in a hundred percent agreeance, we need to do it in a meeting. But I think we need to educate the public about what the differences are in the forms of government and make sure they know exactly what they would be discussing. Because I think the previous times that it was put on the ballot, I think there was a poor job done of public involvement. And I think that if the general public really knew the difference in it, we can, we can get their opinion on which form of government they want, they want as Union County citizens.
And I will say there are different ordinances that control different forms. So to both councilmen Bright and Flood's points, there are some administrative forms that the administrator just, does just manage people and they have to go to council and get council wishes on everything. Some of these counties actually meet twice a month to do that. There are others that are council manager form. There are some that are council administrator with an ordinance or proviso every two years that's signed that gives the administrator more of the manager function, if you will. But again, you're right, anything that you do, the public has to understand what you're going to. And you have to answer those questions as well. What are you going to do with the supervisor's position? Does the supervisor's position become a ceremonial officer during council meetings on? Or do you redo all seven districts or actually redo six and then add a seven? And then council votes amongst themselves that who's going to be the chair and the vice chair for the next two years of council? I think there's a lot of discussion that's going on. But if I'm hearing that councilman Bright, you want this on the agenda in November, if that's what you want to do, then you need to move sooner rather than later because you're going to have to have an ordinance. You've got to have three readings on that ordinance. You're going to have to have a public hearing on that ordinance and then you're going to have to go to vote. I can tell you, it probably will cost between thirty-five thousand and forty thousand dollars to have that vote in an off-year election. If we do have it in an on-year election, you already have the cover of poll workers, advertisements, and those things already covered. When you do it as a singular special election, then the county would have to fund all of the poll workers, all of the advertisements and all that. And as council, you can't, as a county, we can't fund any advertisement. You personally can, but as a county, we can't fund any advertisement, supporting one way or the other.
The county can pay to, the county can't have an opinion on it. That's what they can't, that's what they can't advertise and pay for. But the county can educate the public on what the differences are.
You can put together a bullet point of this is what, because you want to explain what you're looking for. But you're correct, David, you cannot have an opinion. So do I hear that we want to go to a committee?
Motion.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take it to committee. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. And it's unanimous. So John, you are the chair, councilman Flood. So if you want to set a date of when you would like to do this and you want to communicate with me, I'll be more than happy to schedule out for you. Just let me know what date's good for you, give me a couple of options and I'll send it all out to council.
Y'all know your schedules now, I'm willing to throw out a date. I'm fine with next Tuesday. Unless the weather's going to be bad.
I won't be here Tuesday.
Okay, never mind. We'll come up with a different set of dates.
All right. So next, we do have a public comment. And we are glad to introduce Ms. Leslie Swagart to the table. And Les, I know she has three minutes, and we look forward to hearing from her. Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm Leslie Swagart. I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. The first thing I want to talk about is proper communication of council through social media due to a current council member bashing another one in a Facebook post and then blocking me from that post and page after I commented. In a separate communication, the same council member called me an idiot on my own social media post after I questioned his absence at a meeting. There's a possibility that these posts and comments have been deleted, but I have screenshots of all of them, and I will be sending them to all of you. The council member and all council should learn to respond to criticism and interrogation on social media in a professional manner or refrain from using social media altogether. There were a handful of cases in 2024 in the Supreme Court regarding this topic due to the rise of censorship across the country. We saw a lot of that after COVID. Internet users do have a First Amendment right to speak on social, excuse me, social media. And that right may be infringed when the government seeks to interfere with content moderation. Linky versus Freed. The Supreme Court recognized that government officials, if vested with and exercising official authority, could violate the First Amendment by deleting comments or blocking users. And that's what your council member has done. I request that this council member rectify the situation by unblocking me and for the council to review these Supreme Court cases. I will send those to you as well. Secondly, I just want to remind you all that it is your duty as council members to make decisions and to vote based on the wants and needs of constituents. Not yourself, not a select few, not employers, the constituents. Some of you have ran your campaigns promising transparency. And what I'm about to read is an excerpt from a social media post from a council member regarding last month's council meeting. Quote, Chairman Russell pointed out this way the largest investment in Union County at $340 million and 700 jobs. We do not and we will not have the details of the project until the second reading. It must be this way to protect the integrity of the project. Fast forward, and this is quote, I know many will want to go call your favorite council member or county employee to try to find out more, but trust me, they do not know more. We will all get more details at the proper time. That's not transparency. You can't have a figure of 340 million dollars and an estimate of 700 jobs, but no other information. And the people deserve to know what could be, what will be, and what is happening here in the county. We shouldn't have to run to our favorite council member or county employee. It should be discussed here in these meetings. The committee where, you know, you guys were talking about, let's talk about this in private? No, it should be public. All of this should be public. The people want to know. I mean, I know there's not a lot of people here tonight, but I think the reason they don't come is because they don't get a say. We've got, there's going to be a second reading on that Project Panama. But when you're getting the public comment, you're now at the third reading. Where's the time allowance for you guys to sit around and discuss what the public has said? There's, there's none of that. So I just want you all to reconsider where your loyalties lie in this council. And I think a lot of people agree with what I've said here tonight. So, thank you.
Hold on, Les. Thank you much. I appreciate you coming and making some comments. I know some of that was from my post. I kind of agreed, I kind of hesitated on staying the vote with the second reading because the way it stands is you're only supposed to know Panama. What is that? What is it? We're going to wait till Friday before we're going to get our packet at 6 o'clock on Friday? Maybe look at it Monday afternoon? And we're going to make a decision on the 340? We have no clue what it is. I come close to staying the vote on that. And I come okay with first reading, second reading. You're right, Les, we don't even know more. The post.
Everyone should know more.
The post you was referring to, I still like to know who that council member is. There was some pretty strong comments in there, some pretty strong accusations. I'd like to know what that rumor is. I'd like to know the plot to take over camp. I'd like to know some stuff. I'd like some answers there too. You say the committee meetings, they are public. They don't want you to know too much about them. They'll post, they'll kind of, you know, they'll post them somewhere. And I try to share them on social media when I can and let people know. But I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anytime there's a quorum of council, which is at every one of our council meetings and all of our committee meetings, they're open to the public. So, I mean, we may need to do a better job of advertising those. I'm not sure exactly how we advertise them. But, but, I mean, they are, anytime there's three or more council members present, it is considered a quorum. Anytime there's a quorum, it's a public meeting.
Oh, one more thing. You said you was called an idiot. I think I know who it was. I'm not sure.
I cleared it up. I'm the one that said.
On July 31st, there was also some posts made, called me by name, and got deleted in the way hours of nights. On July 31st this year, I think some people might have read that post.
Councilman Bright, I can tell you officially, I've never put your name in a post. Next try.
Hey, gang.
Well, I'm going to finish this.
No, sir. We are going to move to adjourn. We're not going to sit here and argue like this. We're already at the end of business. We're going to go ahead and adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Have a motion second. All those in favor, please stand up.
Now that we're out of meetings, Tom Ball, did he write, did he have my name in the post? Thank you, sir. Roger Doughty, did he have my name in the post? So, did he have my name in the post? Did he delete it just out?